Okay, Mrs. Greer, you want to take a roll call to see if we have a quorum?
Okay, Brad Lizaro.
Present.
Mary Ceratore.
Here.
Dave DeOrinless.
Here.
And Nat Bux.
Here.
Victor Reddick.
Water five, that is a quorum. So, I'd like everyone to rise. Let me please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Okay. The paper did say seven, but the...
The ad said six.
The ad said six, and that's what Mrs. Greer sent to the paper. So, we're stuck with that. We have no control over what was written in the paper when we send them that information. So, it is what it is, folks. So, we'd like to open up our public hearing on the 2017 preliminary budget. It rules for a public hearing. And as... No one has to... No one has to sign up ahead of time. And if you want to speak, there weren't a lot of people coming in, so I didn't have a sign-up sheet. There's only two people, the public here. So, Mr. Jones, would you like to go first if you have anything to say? Okay. Stan? And again, there's no time limit either.
I'm Stan Praschewicz. I've lived in Santa Claus and paid taxes in Santa Claus for 50 years. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight about the budget, the financial conditions here in Santa Claus. I have to say, I was thrown off guard too. And lucky, I just happened to run into Greg today about the time for this hearing. But anyway, I made it. First of all, I'd like to begin with some definitions that some people out there would be interested in as far as the financial condition of the town and someone who's concerned.
Mr., may I ask one question? Could you call the press for us and say, "He was a public citizen," and we will do the same? But the press has, on a number of times, given wrong times after Mrs. Greer has sent them a note. And so, you know, I'm not confirming that you implied anything, but I've talked to the press about printing the right times in, and they do at times send in... They print the wrong times after Mrs. Greer takes efforts to call them and send a memo out to them. So, I apologize for that. But it was by no means the board's intention or fault at that.
Yeah, I know Mike Cuttle, man. And I'll get him, I'll just send him an email.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah. Well, anyway, a budget is nothing more than an educated guess as to what the expenses might be in a following year. That's all it is. It's just an educated guess based on, you know, previous expenses and so on. Now, the term shortfall is, and you know, I'll talk about this in a bit, simply means that the town did not have enough money to meet its expenses. Okay? A fund balance could be positive or negative. If it's positive, it means that the town has money left over from one year going into the next year. If it's negative, then it means that they didn't have enough money. Two important phrases for budgets and finances, I believe, are actual revenue and actual expenses. I mean, an educated guess doesn't tell you an awful lot. But the actual revenue and actual expenses from the previous year tells you quite a bit. So, these two terms, to me, are important. I turned the clock back a bit, first year of dissolution, 2012. We had a budget of $10,640,967. And at the end of 2012, we had a $2 million fund balance, positive fund balance, money to carry forward into the next year, which was wonderful. We had no tax increase for the following year. The following years, 2013, 14, the budgets were in the $11,600 category, around there. The tax increases were very small. I think in 2013, it was $5 for the whole year, for me, anyway. And then after that, if it averaged out $20 a year, we were lucky. But then, you know, we got to 2015, going forward to 2016, and what happened? Well, we had a shortfall of $738,000. Now, that means we have to handle that. We have to have the money ready to pay people. So, how did the board handle it? Well, they did $438,000 worth of cuts, which, you know, you have to look at that and say, "My heavens." They did do something to address this problem. And, you know, $438,000 in cuts. After that, they took money from the Tax Stabilization Fund, the $200,000. And then, believe it or not, there was a positive fund balance going forward, not a big one, only $106,934 that they used, and they covered the shortfall. And, you know, this was good. Now, what you might ask is, what caused the shortfall? Well, we had a new town hall. We had $2.5 million in hand from the insurance from the previous one downtown. So, that money was applied. And then, after that, what happened? Well, the town hall went up, another $3,639,994. But it went up to that, to that figure. Okay? So, that's what caused, I think, the shortfall. And so, we made it up. But the thing of it is, you see, actual expenses, expenses, actual revenues tell us what is really going on. Anticipated revenues, anticipated expenses don't tell us an awful lot. And the problem is that if this town gets in a situation where it's experiencing one shortfall after the other, we are going to be in financial trouble. And, you know, if we don't learn from history, unfortunately, we are doomed to relive it. And, you know, there's a town not too far from us, Victor, New York. And they have a problem up there because of using anticipated revenues from everybody who knows this, the Eastview Mall. And everybody thought that Victor is the mecca to go to for a favorable tax situation. Well, sometimes it doesn't work out that way. And in Victor, it hasn't worked out that way. And I'm here to tell you that their increases in the tax levy and the tax rate are over 100%. So, that's eventually what anticipated revenues and so on will do. You need to look at actual revenues. Before I leave, I'm going to give you a sheet that illustrates how to keep track of actual revenues. It's right here, and I'll give each one of you a copy. You get a quick look at the condition, the financial condition of your town by using these over a period of time. And I might add that even New York State recommends that towns do this so that taxpayers understand what is going on in the town and to be completely transparent about what is going on in the town. You know, I believe that it is obvious that no matter how much money an enterprise has, whether it's public or private, that if excessive spending is the usual way of doing business, any enterprise, public or private, simply cannot spend its way to prosperity. You just can't do it. I don't care if you have little money, if you have a lot of money. Get into the mentality of spend, 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 and eventually, it will bring you down. I mean, I've seen this. I've seen this in Scranton, Pennsylvania. And I'm telling you, when the state goes in there and gives you a budget, they work it out. And I'm telling you, it is, it is something to see. It's an absolute horror. You never want to get yourself in that, in that position. And that's pretty much where we've been, where we are. And I don't know where we're going to go. But I do know that you do have to keep a handle on expenses. You really do. Now, another item I would remind you of, remember the purpose of revaluation when you set the tax rate and tax the people of this town. Remember that you put, we put a lot more value on the books in this town because of revaluation. And I'm here to tell you, when value goes up, taxes should come down. And vice versa, if values go down, taxes go up. It's just a mathematical truth, that's all it is. And I've said it before, please don't put yourself in a position where the town is going to come out like a big prize, state lottery winner by taxing people in this town. I mean, I don't know what's going to happen from year to year, but I do know that if that happens, that stays on permanently, forever. That is not pleasant. And please keep in mind, the average household income in this town is $47,414. And more often than not, this is with two people working in the home. After taxes, 75% of the population in this town is lucky if it has $3,000 a month to spend on its necessities. You know, these people do not need to be clobbered by taxes. Some of us are better off than others, but I'm telling you, there are a lot of working poor in this town. And they really need to be considered. You know, my church has the Year of Mercy this year. We're celebrating the Year of Mercy. And I would hope that the town board would be merciful to these people who are working day in, day out, don't have an awful lot, trying to hang on to their properties, and not tax the daylights out of them. I think that's about it. Good luck, and I hope you'll keep in mind the people I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
My name is Brad Jones. I live at 11 Courtney Drive here in Santa Claus, New York. And I want to thank the town board for allowing this public hearing. I too will send a note to Mike Cuttle because, if you are correct, Supervisor Lizaro, many times, the wrong date, the wrong time gets in. So, I'll do the same as Stan. Just curious, have any of you played golf? Or do you play golf? The reason I ask, if so, do you know what a mulligan is? Let me begin by saying, our community is giving you, all of you, a mulligan this evening for the budget that is now in front of us. And the reason I say that, it's time to regroup. I speak many times up here about time is of the essence. For a proposed budget going into 2017, you still have time to regroup. You get to swing at the ball one more time. I think with what Stan had mentioned, there's a lot of things going on, and you have to look at everything. And why do I say the community's allowing a mulligan? I'm going to hit on some of the items I know. I haven't had the privilege to look at the budget in total detail, but I've been reading what I've seen in the paper and talking with some of the officials. So, why should you get a mulligan? And I don't want anybody to take this personal, but I know for a fact that our town supervisor ran out a pledge to hold for lower taxes. That pledge has been broken in year number one. And don't forget, and this ties to what Stan Prasiewicz just mentioned, the percent tax increase is per thousand. However, check your higher assessment. I'm going to get double hit. I'm just advising the public this evening that some of us are into the shock of our life. It's not just a higher percentage on the tax rate, but also the assessment going up, the shock of our life. That's why I say, a mulligan, regroup, you've got to drive taxes down. You can't double dip. Number two, from what I have heard, the town employees do not need to pay any more in their health care premiums in 2017. Hello? Everybody's paying more. I'm on Medicare, I'm paying more. ITT Gools pumps, everybody's paying more. You're trying to cut costs, and you're not the... unheard of. And I love our town employees, but they need to pay their fair share too. So, you get a mulligan there, you need to look at having everybody pay their fair share. The taxpayer just cannot continue to pay for health care premiums. It was just last week I provided $5 alternatives in finger-length times to help lower taxes for the upcoming closure of SMI. Total overall budget, yes, the general fund, we know is about $5.6 million. But if you add up all your responsibilities, water and sewer rep, public safety, it's close to $19 million. My recommendation, one of those five, was, as public officials, cross the board, 5%. 5% on $19 million is $950,000. 5%. We're all doing that on our own budgets. 10%, imagine 10%. $1.9 million, if you could get the department heads and the departments to say, "It's over, the overspending is over." $1.9 million, almost enough to offset the host agreement from SMI. To think that our town supervisor, and I say this almost jokingly, Greg, you shared with many of us that you were looking, when running for office, for a 15% reduction. You must be as upset as I am as a taxpayer. You gave it a shot, but it sounds like the department heads have not listened. Spending, out of control. Infrastructure capital expenditures have depleted our fund balance. Just four or five years ago, if my memory serves me correctly, the New York State advised previous boards, it may even have been before you, Dave, where we had too much money in our fund balance. Some of it was the insurance money for the old town hall. But imagine New York State coming to the town in Santa Claus, previous administration saying, "You have too much money in your fund balance." Boy, that's a nice problem. Tonight, you know from this budget, our fund balance is depleted. It's gone. Our savings, it's like us at home. We have no savings account. And guess what? It wasn't on your watch. But it is on your watch now going forward. There's no fund balance. The reserves are depleted. Compliment Town Supervisor Lizaro. He says it's time for us to start reserving revenue for the day the landfill is going to close. Some of us would like to have it close sooner than others, but we have to start reserving money for the day it closes. In your 2017 budget, and this is why I'm looking at every one of you, not just Supervisor Lizaro, $2.4 million coming in in 2017 in the budget. I would say probably, as a taxpayer, I would hope, knowing what we know about the host agreement, that you'd take the 50% of that and put it into reserves, especially with the reserves being depleted. So, your job would be, let's put that $1.2 million in the 2017 budget to start building up the reserves for the day the landfill closes. You know, I know, the public does not know, there's not a penny in the 2017 budget going into reserves from the landfill revenue. Hello? Another thing that I had mentioned, you need to recruit community volunteers with financial expertise. You've done a superb job. I've read it in the paper. I've talked to a few people that have been in attendance. You're looking at the nickels and dimes, you're looking at every line item. But you've got to make some major, major cuts. You can't do it in cutting out a treadmill at the community center. You have to look at something bigger. But I want to compliment you, you've looked at the nickels and dimes. But for you as a board to say, higher assessment, higher tax increase, without cutting, that's why I'm saying, you get a mulligan. You need to go back and regroup. Now, another capital expenditure that hasn't been included in the proposed 2017, this is one of these, six of one, half a dozen of another, the proposed sewer line that our town engineer has mentioned. Once again, thank you for having that open house workshop about the capital expenditures. If I hurt our town engineer, who happens to be also the largest town vendor, not good. However, if we move forward with the new sewer line, it will be an additional $2.2 million out of the taxpayer's coffer. Much of it being grant, but $2.2 million from the taxpayer. The good news, it's not in the 2017 budget. That's the good news. The bad news is, and I mentioned this in my article previously, you're going to have sewage coming in from Delago, the proposed 318 corridor, the increased flow from SMI, Petro, going into our aging sewer lines that we all know. And tell you what, I said, "Hold me accountable to," because I didn't do anything 20 years ago. Going into our 100-plus-year aging sewer lines, going down Fall Street to our wastewater facility. If you think we spent a lot of money on repairing the water main breaks, get ready, get your checkbook out, you probably ought to put some, you know, funding in the budget, because, get ready, it's going to happen. Increases, I'd love everybody to get a raise. Matter of fact, with what I saw, what you get as councilman, what town supervisor, Greg Lizaro, makes, I think it's, what, $12,000? $10,000? We have one department head here in our town that is getting two increases since the beginning of the year in excess of any dollar amount you make. Hello? Are any of you willing to go on record this evening, to state what the salary increases are for the department heads? I think it's very important to share that with the public.
Mr. Jones, that is public information. And the budget workshops were open to the public, and no one attended. And I expressly, when I opened those public workshops to the public, I said, "It's for, everyone will have a chance to discuss" of the public workshops, what's brought up at those budgets. No one came. And discussion was had, and good discussion was had, I believe. And there were disagreements. I'm not going to get into the disagreements, because that was... That was another time.
My whole point here... I understand, thank you. My point here is, we're trying to hold taxes in line or lower them, getting ready for when the landfill closes. Stan saying, "Fund balance depleted." And we're giving increases in excess of $5,000, $6,000, $8,000 to department heads. I'll tell you what, this is the place to work. There's a few more reasons for the mulligan. And I really ask you seriously, when you go into your town board meeting this evening, don't pass this proposed budget. It's time to go back and regroup and take another look at it. Now, here are some of the wants. I'm also here to say, there's probably one you should tweak, a line item. And it's not any fault of yours, but it's true with any capital expenditure. And that's with the new town hall. You need to go back as a full board and increase occupancy cost, line item for the new town hall. Any capital expenditure, whether it's at ITT Gools pumps, whether it's at the hospital in Canadegra or in Rochester, your future costs are always higher. We already know what's going on over at the town hall and the additional costs, as is on just the internet. But I think, even though I'm saying, "Cut, cut, cut, cut," you need to take another look at occupancy costs.
There was no cost, there was no increased cost, was there, Tim?
We're below budget right now.
Yes.
By about $300,000.
That's...
Off water damage, $90,000 is not our fault. Insurance paid for that $90,000.
I'm not talking about the water damage. I'm talking about what Mr. Churchill's been hired for.
Yes, and that was, that was written into a cost originally, that, and that, that was, that was provided for on cost. And he was hired for that, but that was within another cost.
Neither here nor there, and I'm not here to, I'm just talking to you.
I don't want you to put a bunch of lies out to the people. I mean, the IT was... No, you're not camera here. Under the IT, foot in the building...
Please, please, I would never, I'm complimenting all of you. I'm asking you to regroup and go back. There's no lies. Why aren't we in the town hall when it was supposed to be in September?
Because we had a water leakage. We were supposed to be in there in September.
Once again, this is a public...
That was not our fault.
This is a public hearing on taxes.
Well, you're bringing it up, Brad.
Okay.
It was beyond us, Churchill's been in there already.
When are we going to go in?
That Monday, that was, we were supposed to have a sign over to us, a water leak was discovered, which was beyond our control. And Windy East was even mad because we would not pay them. We said, "Hey, listen, we don't have..."
Okay.
"...to move in."
Let's, let's go back while we're having a discussion on the internet. Wouldn't that already be done prior? Did we charge back the town engineer or Barton LeJudas for any of this? When you say, "It's in the budget"?
There are percentages of what they were paid. There is a percentage that they get out of that contract, out of the building expense, that was already in that 3.7, 3.9, whatever it was.
Well, okay. I'll stand...
On any project that happens, the engineer gets their percentage.
Let's, let's do this. Give me a mulligan on that one.
Okay.
Okay?
Fine.
Give me a mulligan on that one. But I'm just asking, I'm going to give you a mulligan to regroup and take a good look at it. For some reason, if our town supervisor elects to call the passing of this out-of-control spending plan, and when I say, "Out-of-control spending plan," the new 2017 budget, Greg, you should take the CFO off your... Greg, you should take the CFO off your title, and that's Chief Financial Officer, because at the end of the day, you're accountable for this budget. I say everybody should regroup, but we're in for the shock of our life. These are only a few items. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Quaterchopkin, would you like to speak?
No, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Savinjo, would you like to speak? They didn't have a sign-up sheet because there weren't a lot of people coming in. Would you be more than welcome to speak?
Well, I don't have a line-by-line analysis. So you have, I have to go up there. I didn't actually come prepared to speak.
Okay. Okay, I'm just wondering, because there's no sign-up sheet. Anyone who's at the meeting is allowed to speak?
God, is there anything you'd like to say about the budget reserve or anything? We don't have a reserve, do we have a reserve?
I do have a question, it's partly the budget.
Now, we don't have to answer these questions, you know, let's hope here, we'll try.
Of course you want to be out there. You, I'm Susan Savinjo, resident of Santa Claus downtown. You have recently, at least in the paper, that the Old Village Hall was sold, was in the process of being sold?
Well, we had a bid on it, and that'll be, that'll be a motion during this meeting.
My impression was that, from the paper, that the bid was accepted by the board?
It won't be accepted until, won't be accepted or rejected until there's a motion.
Okay, well, this relates to that money which was.
Which, what do you, I'm talking about the village or the town hall?
I'm talking about the former village hall currently, police department.
Okay, yes. That was the subject of a resolution of the board to accept a proposal that had been submitted.
Well, that was a former village asset. And back when the village was dissolving, we understood, and the members of the board at that time, understood that the sale of any form of village assets, those monies would be returned to the fund of the citizens of the former villages.
The village debt service?
So the village debt service.
Yes.
So I guess, I was looking for some reassurance that would actually happen, should that money actually come in.
That, that's something that first, I guess this board will have to see that it was in fact voted upon. And then, again, if it was voted upon, you know, my feeling is that, that unless it was a law, made a law, and then that goes to permission of referendum, if I'm correct, if it's law, we want to change the law, that would have to go to a referendum. But anything else, boards are generally not obligated by a past board's measure of resolution.
Let me, let me just address that for a minute, if I can.
Are you morally?
We're looking morally.
Well, that's different, okay. Do you want to, is there a legal obligation to?
No, I didn't want to ask that. I wanted, what I'm asking is, is this board going to honor that concept, which was part of the?
We haven't discussed that yet.
Agreements.
Well, we will be. There was a number of people approaching me on that, but I don't know how this board's going to vote on that one way or the other, because we haven't, we haven't even discussed that yet.
Well, I would urge you to be followed through on that. And following up on Mr. Jones's comments, I haven't had a chance to read mine by the line in the budget, but on the first few pages, I noticed some things that probably weren't necessary, that were monies that weren't spent last year, and they're still in there. And I imagine there's a lot of detail that still could result in some savings to the citizens.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, see, no one would like to speak on this budget. I move to close the public hearing on the budget. Need a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, public hearing is closed.